I'm about to call the order of the January 20th, 2022 meeting of Mayor and Council. For the invocation, I'd like to call on my dear friend Pastor Martin Collins, Image of God Ministries, to lead us in prayer, and if you'd please remain standing for the pledge.
Father, first of all, I thank you, as we come to the end of the first month of 2020, that you continue to have favor on the city of Valdosta. Continue to look over our councilmen and councilwomen and their families and have a hedge of protection about them. Continue to let this city go forth in unity. Continue to give our city councilmen and councilwomen wisdom as they lead and make decisions about this city. We just thank you for 2022 being so much better than 2021 in the one bad for Valdosta. So we just thank you for your favor on us, and we thank you for all of this in the precious name of your son, Jesus, and in his name we pray. Amen and amen.
Council, you've had time to review the minutes from the January 6 regular meeting. Are there any additions that you'd like to add? Hearing none, it's approved by acclamation. We'll move on to item three on the agenda. Bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures. Item A, consideration of bids for the purchase of a grapple truck for the Public Works Department. Richard Hardy, our deputy city manager of operations, to present. Hi, Richard.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yes, this is for consideration to purchase a grapple truck for the Public Works Department. Our sanitation division utilized this truck to pick up yard debris, bulk items on a designated route, and this is a FY22 budgeted item. Back in January, we projected approximately about $160,000 to pay for this vehicle, and that's what we presented to council. However, when the bids came in, we had one vendor that came in, it came in at $204,000, approximately $45,000 overbid. We didn't receive any other bids, but looking into this, this is the going rate based off of the way the economy is going and the availability of equipment. So our staff recommends that we move forward to purchase this vehicle for the Public Works Department, exceeding the 45K above budget.
How you paying for this? Do you splosh?
Yes, sir. This is a splosh eight item.
City manager?
Oh, it comes from the vicars. It is a splosh item for us where we usually put these larger pieces of equipment, but now that we've got the final regs of the ARPA funding, this meets the expenditure for ARPA. So we have some options with something like this. Now, we could pay the full expense from ARPA, or we could take the overage of $45,000 and just pay the overage from ARPA, and then it will keep us in budget with the 160 that we had originally done. So we've got some options with that, and I just wanted to say that publicly that we there are some options with this to handle the overage.
Including making Richard tighten his belt in his department, right?
This would help him not have to tighten so much.
I just have a question, a comment maybe. Do you think that the reason we only had one bid is because of availability?
Well, actually, that's one of the things right now. We had one vendor that said that they could find us a vehicle and provide this vehicle, and it still is going to take about 12 months from now until we get it. So looking forward, we thought about postponing, but moving down the road, waiting, didn't know whether that price was going to come down, and then it still would push that vehicle, the timeframe out.
I mean, not getting vehicles are always delayed.
Right.
If you can find them.
If you can find them, and this is the only vendor that wanted to bid.
Counsel, any further questions?
Does this meet your specs?
Yes, sir. It does meet specifications.
There's no other questions, I'll turn it over to you for action, counsel.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the bid to Holmack Corporation, the amount of $204,845,65. And sixty-five cents. Did I say that right?
I have a motion. Second. I have a motion in a second. All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Richard, thank you. Item B, consideration of our request to approve payment for engineering services for the Jerry Jones Drive Widening Project. David Frost, how are you doing?
Good evening. Yes, this is in preparation of the GDOT project widening Jerry Jones, as the mayor said. The city was required to develop and submit relocation plans to relocate water and sewer utilities along the project area. Following a review of the GDOT plans for the project, staff determined the necessary surveying, engineering, and plaid development would need to be outsourced. Using the city's library of approved engineering firms, staff selected Innovate Engineering and Surveying to perform the work. Innovate was immediately available and had the resources to expedite development of the relocation plans. Due to the scope of the project and the unknowns involved with the engineering plans and not to exceed costs, the work was used. Based on industry standards for this type of project, engineering cost is typically 4% of the construction project, construction cost. The estimated construction cost for Jerry Jones, as we mentioned in a previous council meeting, was just over $3 million. With that, the not to exceed cost for engineering services would be $123,069.08. The actual cost will be determined in February when the GDOT opens up the bids for the project. The options are one, to authorize payment to Innovate Engineering and Surveying for the not to exceed amount of $123,069.08. After the GDOT bid opening, or do not authorize the payment is option two. We recommend option one. Glad to take any questions.
Who you say was paying for it?
We're paying for it.
We pay for our T-splosh money?
We're paying for it out of Splosh Seven, yes, sir.
Splosh Seven?
Correct.
Okay, not T-splosh?
No, not T-splosh.
Okay, all right. And that's just for the engineering, just for the designing, what got to be done through the construction?
Correct, correct. The designing of the actual relocating the water and sewer utilities.
Yeah, but now the work hasn't been done, it's just the design to what needs to be done.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any further questions for David? Anybody want to make a motion on this one?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve not to exceed $123,069, $123,069.08.
A motion?
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you, David. Thank you, consideration. Item C is consideration of bids for the purchase of a jet vacuum sewer truck for the Utilities Department. David Frost asking for more money.
Yes, sir, thank you. The Utilities Department needs replacing over a jet vacuum sewer truck, one of three that we have, that has high mileage and rising maintenance costs. This is a council-approved item from FY22 with a budget of $395,000. Unfortunately, the vacuum truck market, like all others, is going through some, you know, same effects with inflation and availability. Because of this, only one vendor had the chassis available for this truck to submit a bid. That bid was received on November 30th from Adams Equipment for $424,973. The options are to, one, approve the bid as submitted, or to do not approve. We recommend option one, to approve the bid by Adams Equipment, and initially allow the finance director to explore financing options for this purpose. Now, we are looking at doing a lease for this.
What kind of time delivery you have on that?
For delivery? I don't have that answer for you right now. I can get that for you, though.
Say again?
You're talking about for delivery of the vehicle?
Yeah, if we approve it, when will we receive it?
I'd have to check on that, I'm not sure. I'll get back with you on it.
And then what's the shelf life on one of these things? How long's this half million dollars going to last?
Mr. Hardy got something.
Same thing. They're backed up, and these same thing, this was the only vendor that could produce this vehicle.
And how long is the warranty on here?
I don't have an answer for the war, as far as the warranty goes. I can get you one.
We get five years out of these things? Richard?
But that kind of much.
What year is that? How old before we got in the shop right now? Yeah.
The truck itself has an engine transmission, and certain parts of the vacuum truck are provided. The trucks typically last ten to fifteen years.
Okay. Answers my question.
Thanks, John.
Counsel, any further questions? Turn it over to you for action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve this bid as presented.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Item four, local funding and requests. A, consideration of our request to approve the submission of a new conditional use permit. The CUP application came to us less than 12 months after the denial of the previous CUP application for the same property at 4036 Bemis Road. Matt Martin will explain.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Last time, on June the 10th, we held a public hearing for a conditional use permit for property located at 4036 Bemis. This is the former Winn-Dixie property. That conditional use permit request was to convert the property to a self-storage facility. The result of that public hearing was a denial of the conditional use permit by a four to three vote. State law and local ordinance particularly requires a 12-month waiting period before a new application can be submitted. The petitioner is here tonight, but the petitioner is the new property owner of this property, and he, along with former applicants, are wanting to submit a new conditional use permit, but they don't want to wait the full 12 months, but simply submit it early, and we're about to embark on month number eight, so we're more than halfway through the 12-month period. But I want to emphasize, their request before you tonight is not a rehearing of the conditional use. Nothing has been submitted yet. It is simply to ask your permission to submit the conditional use application before the expiration of 12 months. Petitioners here to present their arguments to you, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about procedure.
Counsel, any questions for Matt?
Explain to us exactly what it is that is a request for us to do, is to give them permission to make an application?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Correct. That's all it is, is a simple question of whether to allow them to submit a new request early or not.
Counsel, any further questions? Do you need the applicant to come forward or not? Not needed?
Let him talk.
Yes?
Yes, let him speak.
The applicant would come forward at this time for questions from the council?
No, let him explain himself, because the last time we got shot down with this.
Is that new person right here?
Oh, that's.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Trey Taylor. I live at Four Fox Hollow Circle in the city of Valdosta. I'm looking at investing quite a lot of money into this project out in District Four, and have partnered with the previous applicants on this who are not local people and needed some help figuring out exactly what would be a good project to go in there, so we are looking at that. We're coming back a little bit early, but time is money, as you know. We have marketed this property to over 32 different special use cases, and we have not received any interest in those cases. We continue to pursue those, and would like your approval, of course, to move forward with the plans for the self-storage facility as a use for that while we investigate the other ones.
Thank you, sir.
Great explanation. Counsel, any questions for the applicant? Counsel, thank you. Counsel, I'll turn it over to you for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this as presented.
Please. Please.
Say it again. What did you say?
Clear enough for the waiver.
For them to move forward with the, for them to submit a conditional use permit.
Got you.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any other motion? All right. A motion in a second, all in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. All right, we'll move on to item B, consideration of our request to purchase 20 sets of structural firefighting gear for the Valdosta Fire Department. Mayor Chief Brian Boutwell will present, and always as our support.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do appreciate that support. Tonight, we have the budget item for structural firefighting gear. The fiscal year approved amount, $62,700 for the gear. The garments have a lifetime warranty, shelf life of 10 years, as long as it's a manufactured defect and it's not damaged through use. And so what we're asking for tonight is to move forward and request purchase of 20 sets at $47,102.60 under state contract.
Counsel, any questions? Hearing no questions, I'll turn it over to you for action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve your request.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Chief, thank you. We'll move on to item five, boards, commissions, authorities, and advisory committees. Consideration of an appointment to the Valdosta Lounds Land Bank Authority. This appointment was postponed at the January 6 regular meeting. There is one applicant, Ms. Carla Walker. That being said, I will now accept nominations.
Isn't that an appointment that you made?
It is not. It is an appointment that you guys get to make. We dove deep, dove deep into that. It was revised in about 2017, 2018, somewhere in there.
Yes, the Valdosta Housing Authority.
No, Land Bank Authority.
Land Bank.
Yeah, I still make the housing authority, but not the land bank. That is up to you guys. So again, Carla Walker is the lone applicant, but if you guys want to put her or anybody else.
So move for Carla Walker.
Second.
I got a motion in a second for Carla Walker. All in favor, show of hands. All, oh, good. I was going to say all in opposition, but it's unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Move on to item six, citizens to be heard. The portion of the meeting, we ask that you come forward and state your name and address so we may have it for the record. Our policy requires you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to council as a whole, and do not attempt to engage individual members of council in debate. It's the council's policy to follow through immediately with your concern. We ask that any groups that want to address the council designate one spokesperson, again, to be courteous to others. With that being said, is there any citizens to be heard this evening? And we'll move on. Item seven, city managers' report. Mark Barber.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few things, this afternoon, the four-year desk this evening is a summary of the final regulations of ARPA spending, and it's the final regs. Again, it's summary version. The detailed version is 856 pages long. If anybody would like a hard copy of that, we'll be happy to do so or share a link with you, but it is quite voluminous in its reading. So there are some, as we're going through it as a staff, there are some big changes, some different changes from the intermols. So I just want to once again thank you guys for waiting to these. Final regs came out before we did too much in the direction of spending the ARPA funds. So, but read through them, again, if you want, the 856 pages, we'll definitely get that to you, but that gives you a good summary and an idea of what they're going to allow for us to spend on the reporting details.
How much money is that we have that we have received that we haven't spent yet?
Well, we haven't spent it. Total-wise, in two-year period, we're going to get 16.3 million, somewhere in there. Back in June, we received half of that, and we spent about $3 million of that. The only thing we've spent is for employee premium pay for folks having to work during the COVID pandemic from that. The total cost for our employees was $5 million, but we took that for another pot of money to make sure that we were in the spirit and the intent of ARPA regulations. And reading it now, we made the right decision to do that.
I'd like to make a suggestion before you come down with the final thing, go that council has some discussion, you have some discussion with council, where we could help make up the agenda of what we're going to do before you come and say this is what you propose.
But that's not going to happen. Saturday at the retreat, all day, we will have a full two-day retreat, because Saturday, all we're going to do is talk about the projects you'd like to move forward with, things that I can start doing the research on. All the spending will be up to each of you of how you'd like to spend this money, and we will spend all day Saturday doing exactly what you're talking about, counsel.
When are we going to have the retreat?
March 18th and 19th. So it's going to be two full, yeah, usually a day and a half, but right now it's two full days and may need a little more. It's a very healthy.
Eighteenth and nineteenth.
Eighteenth and 19th.
So we will get a list and what we're going to spend this for?
I'm going to let you develop the list, not myself.
So we can read this and develop a list?
Yeah, like I said, we're going, I'm going to give you some of the general overviews, of course, when we open some of the new things that the final regs allowed that the interim didn't, and kind of give you a little background on it. But as far as the projects, those aren't my projects. Those are, of course, I have some I would like to mention, but at the end of the day, it's what Mayor and Council decide how they want to spend their ARPA funds, and I'll be there to research it and do all that for you, but I do have some projects I think would be worthwhile to discuss, but at the end of the day, it's your choice.
I understand you're right, it's going to be discussed at Citizens United? Are this going to be?
Our summer, our retreat.
Our retreat?
Our retreat, yeah, yeah.
I kept hearing you say Citizens.
No, March 18th and 19th are our strategic summer.
Okay.
So we're going to move the first, the first day Friday fairly quickly. It's a loaded agenda, but we're going to move quickly so we can spend a full day Saturday talking about this, because I hope to come away that Saturday with a good idea of a direction you guys want to go with different projects, and we can go ahead and start with those as soon as we can.
The 19th, I'm supposed to be out of town, so anyhow, I'll see what.
Well, you can't go now.
Yeah, I've got to see what I can do.
Okay. Counselman, do you want to meet with me prior, and I'll submit your list? I'll argue for it.
Well, I'm just going to be honest, I would, if you could work it out, I think it's best everybody's there to talk about it, hear what's being said, and nothing gets repeated wrong or anything like that.
I agree.
Yes, I agree, because.
I mean, I think.
Citizens should give him a fair.
Yeah. I mean, this is a hot topic, and I just think that's the best way to do it, so.
So once we leave our letter, it'd be sealed?
Well, being concrete would just give us a good idea, you know, because like you said, we've got eight, a little over eight million, rotation one. We spent three of us, so we've only got five left in that first phase. So I should, I'm hoping that kind of can be easy for us to decide how to do that five, and then we, we're not supposed to get the second phase of the $8 million until June of 2022. So we got time, we just need that direction of where we're going. So when citizens are asking where you, how you spend the money, we can say it's not in concrete, but here's our ideas, and here's where we're headed. Also in front of you tonight, you had a Valdostaopoly game. It's all the rage around Valdosta, and it's kind of a cool thing, and just wanted to make sure that each one of you got one. And even if you don't like Monopoly like me, it's kind of cool. It's about Valdosta when you go around the board, so we want to make sure each of you had one of those. Also, congratulations to Councilman Howard from GMA. We received notice today that he's been recognized by the municipal association for his training efforts, and he's reached at least 72 hours. You might have had a little more, but I know you at least have to have 72, so congratulations, Councilman Howard. Also, I want to remind you that boat supper February 2nd, we've talked about several times, we'll keep that on your calendar as well. Also, earlier in the week, I'd sent an email about redistricting, because I know there'd been a lot of questions surrounding our local redistricting, and like the email said, it's what we thought it was the whole time. They had asked us to be patient with them, because the counties have their elections this year, a lot of, majority of the counties. We don't have an election. They're behind because of the census count being so far behind. So our information that we need on our track level for local municipalities like us is not ready yet. So they've asked us to be patient, call her back late February, and then we'll all go and up to Atlanta to their office, or there's a local office somewhere, I think maybe in Tifton or somewhere, we may go there, but they will move those lines and you can, we'll make those decisions as a team as to what needs to move and how it needs to move.
We always went to Atlanta.
Yeah, there's a local office now, but I don't know if they will, if we're going to, they're going to have that type of technology at the local office, but so.
When you say local, you mean close around.
Right, a regional type office, yes, yes, sir.
So you would be able to sit in that meeting also?
Yes, yeah, we'll go as a team. Y'all can see, you know, you can already kind of see with some, she sent me some preliminary numbers, but she said, really don't go by those, just wait till we get in the meeting, and you can, and it's really cool. I mean, Mr. Councilman, because you've been, you see, they just moved those lines and everything tallies for you, all the right percentages, race, gender, all those kind of cool things. Because what they're trying to do, the average they're looking for is about 9,200 folks in a, in a district, voting folks in the district, and right now, some are lower, some are higher, so there, so there'll be some of those kind of things to move around. It's really interesting the way it works, so, but rest assured, we are good. Then I'll call them, our representatives back on late February. And just like I said, also in the email, Senator Goodman was really critical in helping get in right, touch with the right folks, I wasn't getting a response for a little bit, and it was kind of getting frustrating, you guys were having questions, and so Senator Goodman stepped in and helped us to make that, and he will spot to our legislation next legislative season for whatever changes we're doing.
So since Councilman Vickers has been a part of it before, will we get a chance to be a part of this?
We'll go as a team.
Everybody's going.
Everybody will go.
I want Matt Martin there with us, too.
Oh, now we bog it down. He got me snapped.
In two lines, I want Matt with me.
Matt's already given me some lines where he thinks the rear portion of the office is going to move, so he's already ahead of the game. But yes, yes, counsel, we'll go as a group, you'll have input, you just ask, what if instead of the cutoff is this side of the road, what is that, and you'll see the immediate effect of what they're looking for us to have. Because we do get to make that decision, but they, they'll have heavy input because they know what their rules require as well.
There's some concern about the, our numbers for us increasing, and I was a little disappointed about what I heard.
It's what the rear portion of the office has right now is we grew 860 people.
Eighteen, ten years.
In 10 years. We do, I can't imagine that being right, but as Matt Martin and I talked today, you know, we can contest that, but it takes forever, and it would not affect, we wouldn't have anything in time, the time it's, in time for us to do redistricting, it is a process. So we went from 54 something to 50, we're not even, you know, we were saying 50, we were touting 56 on our own guess, we didn't even make it to 56. And 860, and District Four has grown tremendously, all the new homes out there, just think about that. There's more than 860. And two in each, you count the husband and wife and the kids, you know, you count everybody. That's just, something's not right.
If I remember, if I remember right, we had to get some adjustment on our last one or the last two because of the count, and I forgot what procedure.
I think it was, one time it was VSU and one time it was prison inmates. They didn't get counted that could be counted.
It was an apartment complex counted.
It's out, right.
So we got to really, we really have to have somebody to really look at those numbers.
Right. There's a process that you have to go through, and our, our local person will be Matt. Matt was in charge of working with the state census folks, but it is a drawn-out process to get that, to get the ball rolling, to relook at those numbers. They will not, I can, they will not be ready, even if we did it late in the year, we wouldn't have those new numbers, amended numbers in time for redistricting.
So you think the census has something to do with our people not?
Ma'am.
You think the census, I mean, not the census. COVID has something to do?
You know, that's why it was, you know, it kept being extended because of COVID. I don't know if that extension really did much good. Obviously, in our case, it apparently didn't.
Okay, my next question is, I'm listening to the news. Will you have any input on, I know, I might be asking out of order, about the poll redistricted and et cetera, places to go vote and et cetera?
I mean, I can, whatever, you know, ideas you may have, I can always present them to Deb Cox for consideration as we're working on a project now. for consideration as we're working on a project now.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Last but not least, this evening, as you know, Ashlyn Betton is going, tomorrow, half-day is her last day, so this will be her last council meeting with this, and so she's not going to like this, but I'm going to ask.
Don't forward.
Come on up, Ashlyn. You're public information, so you're used to it, but I just want to say, Ashlyn is an amazing, talented young lady, and amazing, talented folks are sought after, and it's, as much as I hate to see her go, it's a compliment for our city that folks look to us first when they're looking for people. Ashlyn has taken us to, I pretty much gave her some general instructions her first day, and she took it, ran with it, and has done an incredible job, and wish her nothing but the best of luck at the City of Thomasville, and I am sure she wants to speak this evening, so I'm going to step out of the way.
Just like I told Mark, I'm so grateful for the opportunity that y'all provided me here and everything that we've done in almost the past four years, so I'm definitely going to miss each and every one of you, but don't worry, I'll keep up with you. I know there's like social media and everything now that we can, we can use to keep in touch, but I'll be following along with what y'all are doing, but I just am blessed with the opportunity that I've had here, and I so enjoyed it, so I will miss every single one of you. Thank you so much.
Did you get my email that I sent you, sweetie? And I just want to tell you how much I thank you and I cared for you, and you were such an inspiration to me as a councilperson, and there was not a time that I asked you for something or assistance, you didn't come to my rescue. And that meant so much to me, and I was telling Ms. T., every time I get attached to a person or a body here, someone come get you, but I am excited about.
Stop getting attached. You told our story very well. Thank you, Ashley. So any other questions? Yes, sir.
My, I have a question that I want to refer to Pat Colling. And this, Pat Colling, concerning those two dead of the streets up there by Tom Park that I talked to you about last year, and you see out before they make it where they can trust, turn around in there, and, you know, we were looking when the contractor get up in that area, you were going to get that done, and they called me yesterday about that.
Yeah, we have not closed out our Elmeg yet, and I told you that's how we were going to try to do it. The company, Scrubs, that's doing the work, has been tied up out at the airport. They still have some other projects that they have to do yet.
But they the one you're going to make that loop in there like what you said you were going to do?
Yeah.
We're talking about two streets up there by Tom?
Yeah, I know exactly what we're talking about. We're talking about with the, yeah, yeah. We haven't dropped it yet.
Okay.
Okay?
Let's see, can we get it there before you retire?
Yeah, well, I think we can probably do that.
Yeah.
Okay?
All right, but no, I got to start all over with loopers.
Okay, yeah, well, like I said, we were expecting to do that with Elmeg contingency money.
And the estimated completion date for that runway project is somewhere around February 11th. Is that, is quite an unbelievable task out there. It really is. All right, the council comments, I'll lead off. January 29th, I'm inviting everybody to the Third Annual Mayor's Paddle. We're going to put our boats on the river at the Trukville Boat Ramp out 133. If you turn left at Valtech Road instead of right, you'll drop right down into that boat ramp. We're going to go 11 miles on the Woodlakucci, and again, this is just for the third year to reaffirm our complete and total commitment to our waterways and keeping them clean. The City of Valdosta has made that commitment, and we're going to stand by it year after year. We'll spend four, four and a half hours on the river together. I believe we'll be starting off right around 34, 35 degrees as we hit the water. It is going to warm up that day to about 57, but we'd love you to join us. We will have extra kayaks. Boys and Girls Club will help us with shuttling, and we expect over 100 people. We had 80-plus last year on the river, and it is, again, it's quite a spectacle. This year, we'll be expanding to the Mayor and Chairman's Paddle. He won't be in attendance, but he and the county are throwing their support behind it as well, so. You could get over one of the bridges and watch us pass underneath. Two, a lot of the councilor, not here, and a lot of council won't be here in town this weekend for the Cities United Summit up in Atlanta. Again, more class time, more learning, more ways to better serve the people of Valdosta as well, so I wish them well. Eric, if you don't mind, I'll shuttle you up there to get your award on Sunday, if that's, that's all right with you.
I think that's possible, but I'm going to, because I don't want to be stingy, anybody who wants to take my mayor's paddle. Anybody, chief, any of the chiefs.
People that last think that Bird Supper, that Mark, the Bird Supper on February 2nd that Mark mentioned, there is a lot of money being tossed about the Capitol right now. This is a very critical one. You'll have the ear of all your legislators. Come with some ideas, come with some projects, and let's work them over on the 2nd at the Train Depot.
Mr., you know anything that's going to be approved at direct, thick Valdosta Lounge kind of in the proposal in this legislative session?
I do, and I'm not going to jinx it. They have support in the House and support in the Senate for a very large local project. A few of us were in attendance for it at the meeting and the request, so I believe Senator Goodman and then our contingent in the House have had great success with pushing that to the finish line. Share it with you afterward, maybe. Again, I don't want to jinx it. All right, any other council comments this evening? Oh, wait, I think we got another city manager's comment.
Just real quick, one item I forgot, and you're going to email on this probably in the morning. January 25th is coming up Tuesday. It will be our first meeting of the Valdosta Community Police Engagement Board. We'll have an inaugural meeting of that. It's at 6 o'clock in the annex multipurpose room. We'll get you an agenda out so you can kind of see what's going to happen at this first meeting. It's pretty much going to be an introduction of our board members that, as you remember, each of you selected. We had a few cases where we had to rearrange some, so it's taken us a little bit to get to this point. And then, you know, then it was the Christmas holidays, and then there was a few COVID-positive folks, so this is, hopefully, it's going to come together. January 25th is the kickoff meeting, and it'll be introductions. We'll just have some finger foods, not a full meal, and we'll ask the board then to choose their chairman and their vice chairman that night if they feel comfortable doing so. So January 25th, 6 o'clock, but I'll give everybody an email and an agenda in the morning. Well, we had, we had six sign up, yeah, and then three, the day of, there was only three that showed up, but I think one other has shown up since that point in time. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Well, I mean, usually you guys would get an invitation to the beginning, the beginning introductions and the graduation, definitely, but Anitra's learning, and she will, you know, she now knows that's a standard invitation to all Mayor and Council members, but again, she's doing a very good job filling in for Ms. Ross, and so, yeah, those kind of oversights can be expected.
Counsel, any further comments?
Right. Sure. And again, that's usually the procedure, but with Anitra trying to fill in for everything over there, so.
Mark, thank you. Counsel, hearing no further comments, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move here?
All in favor, show of hands.